Yeah, it was a nice name.
It's nice that you have kids. I want my trees back.
I saw that tree.
Okay. I will welcome everyone to the special planning board meeting of March 20th. Christine, would you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Roger Dupree?
Here.
Joshua Najin?
Here.
Michael Marcot?
Present.
Shanna Cox?
Here.
Lucy Bisson?
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge, Lee Albert?
Here.
And Alex Pine?
Present.
And Amy Smith is absent.
Right, so if, since Amy is absent, I will name Lee as the voting member. Okay. All right, so it's not really an adjustment to the agenda, but I received a phone call from David and Shelley about an hour ago, and there seems to have been some issues with notice and stuff, so I'm going to ask Shelley to discuss what the issue that was brought up, and we can proceed from there.
Okay. So, we received a phone call from a member of the public today who was concerned that the meeting tonight may not have been noticed properly. So, we looked into it, and I can tell you kind of what we did and what's required. So, on Wednesday last week, yourselves, all of the elected officials, staff, who typically get our agendas, and the Sun Journal, were sent copies of the agenda. The agenda was posted on the second floor, which is the standard practice. It did not get put on our website, which was an oversight on staff's part. So, that did not happen. What I passed out are, and no ad in the paper is required for a meeting without a public hearing, so, there was no public hearing, so we wouldn't need to put it in the paper. What I have handed out and sent to you are a few things. The first one was the rules of procedure for the planning board, which, under meetings, stated that special meetings may be held and provided that at least 24 hours' notice of the meeting be given to each member, which has happened. Further on, it requires that freedom of access information, Section I, that all meetings of the planning board be conducted in accordance with means public right to know law. And then, the next page that I had added to this excerpt is Section 406 of the right to know requirement, which has to do with public notice. It says, "Public notice shall be given for all public proceedings. If the proceedings are a meeting of a body or agency consisting of three or more persons, notice shall be given and ample time to allow public attendance and shall be disseminated in a manner reasonably calculated to notify the general public in this jurisdiction served by the body or agency." Then it goes on to talk about an emergency meeting. And then, we also printed for you information from main municipal associations, Handbook for Planning Boards, which talks about the Freedom of Access Act, a right to know law, talks about notice of meetings. So, it says, "The Freedom of Access Act itself does not require that a meeting agenda be posted and does not specify the form or amount of notice which must be used to publicize the meeting." It does further state that, you know, notice should be given far enough in advance to allow the public to attend, so there's no defined timeline given. So, in some communities, that might mean a newspaper notice of some sort, and others, posting notice around town may be enough. So, I'll let you look at that. While we're talking about procedure, I did just want to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is recorded. We've been posting those meetings on our YouTube channel, so that will likely be the case with this meeting as well. There was also a concern raised by somebody that there might be sidebar discussions happening. I haven't heard of anything happening with the planning board, but just want to remind everyone that emails related to planning board business are, you know, can be part of the public record if we received a FOA request, that those would be requested, so.
So, basically, our decision is, do we believe that we gave enough public notice and we can proceed, or do we feel that there wasn't enough public notice and we table this stuff, cancel, you know, close the meeting, and bring this up next week? My personal opinion is, I think we gave enough notice, and if they want to file a, an FOAA, they can have at my emails. I don't have anything to hide. I mean, they're going to have to dig through a lot of junk emails, because I get tons of those, but, I mean, I don't have any problem. So, I'm going to poll the board, and then we'll proceed. Roger, how, what is your opinion?
Well, I think we gave adequate notice, and I think we should proceed with what we're doing.
Okay. Joshua?
I would say, out of an abundance of caution, I would be comfortable with waiting, but I also think we gave fair notice.
Okay. Michael?
A question first.
Sure.
So, the only real concern was that it wasn't posted in the paper?
No, I think the real concern was it didn't go to the website and cali, the calendar, yeah, on the website.
Yeah. If it wasn't for an email reminding me of today's, tonight's meeting, I probably wouldn't have even been here.
[laughing]
I had no communication in the past, you know, week with anybody, seeing what was proposed, you know, for tonight, and today's email was the first I had any exposure to it. I think we provided ample notice.
Okay. Shanna?
If we were tackling any issue other than a letter that is about to be made very public anyway, [laughing] I would be more hesitant to move forward, because I'm sensitive to really making sure that we've done everything really in alignment with both the process and the intent of the process. It is a bummer that we missed the website, but like, we're human and things happen. It was publicly posted on the second floor, which is in alignment with the must publicly post in public spaces. I'm not uncomfortable with moving forward tonight. The only issue at hand is a very public issue, and you're going to get a very public recording, and I have no concern.
Okay. Christine?
I agree with everything Shanna just said. I think in particular, I mean, I think we followed the procedures as best we could, and that there was public notice, albeit, obviously, less than normal, but I think particularly with the content of this meeting, I feel comfortable moving forward, since it's for the purpose of us collectively expressing our opinion, and there wouldn't be public input, and they can watch the meeting on YouTube, like, we're certainly not hiding the meeting's context to anybody, so I feel comfortable.
Okay. Lee?
Yeah, Christine said precisely what I was going to say, I think. Had the content been different, I would be cautious, but it's a letter that we're drafting ourselves, that ultimately will be posted publicly, so I'm fine proceeding.
Alex?
Was the person who called in, did they say, like, they would attend if they had known, or were they just like, hey, just letting you know it wasn't posted on the website?
Yeah, I, they didn't express that they were definitely coming. They certainly were made aware that the recording would be available and that there would be minutes, so.
I mean, I think, everyone said that, yeah, this is going to be a public letter, we're not trying to hide anything.
Okay. All right. In that case, I think the consensus is that, so, let's have an official vote on it, now that I've polled everyone and I've got the feeling, so, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
And?
Oh, what are we voting on?
Yes, shall we have a motion that we proceed with the meeting?
I would make a motion to proceed with the public meeting to discuss the letter that we are going to hopefully finalize tonight.
Okay.
Second?
All right. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
And Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's proceed. Okay, so, the, everybody's, do you guys have your copy, or it's on the, on the computer screen, so?
Do you want to start with correspondence?
Oh, do, yes. So, correspondence, we did get an email from Amy, who could not attend today, with a couple of suggestions. I recommend that we just put them in as we review each paragraph, because she's identified them that way, and I think that might be the easiest way to, you know, make it make sense, otherwise it won't make sense. Okay. There are no public hearings, and the other business is the planning board discussing the content for developing the, a letter to the city council. All right, so, I think the, you know, maybe, do you want me, I'm going to read it paragraph by paragraph, or?
I would just be curious if there was any generic overarching feedback of like, now that we're seeing it, we don't want to do this, or you guys took a weird turn with this, or just any kind of generic feedback before we get into wordsmithing and finalizing?
I think it's wordy, but that's, I tend to be, you know, tend to be concise more, but, but that's fine. You know, the wordiness is fine, and that's, like, you know.
I'd also propose that when we go through and do review, that we focus on content first, and then we can do, like, orthography last, just so we don't, like, make an edit above and then invalidate it, because we made an edit below.
Right, yeah, sure. So, do you want me to, so, would you like me to read the whole thing?
I was just going to say for comment, I think no major pauses with the letter. I agree with the wordiness of it, and almost also, if, I think, good to recognize the tension at the outset, but maybe put more of what we're hoping for futuristically at the top, rather than waiting.
At the bottom.
Certainly probably want to reiterate it at the bottom, so we're driving the point home, but I think to lift that might help us, but also get folks to want to read the rest of the letter.
Michael?
I had a chance to read it this afternoon, and, yeah, it did seem to take a different turn of sorts [laughing] from what we had last week. I thought it was really soft in some places, wordy, few sentences I had a lot of trouble with, might have been grammar, not how it was constructed. Didn't really object to anything that was in it, but I think a few places we need to make a stronger point.
Okay. All right, so, so let me start by, so I'll just read the first paragraph, and we'll go from there. I, you know, there was a couple of places where there were dates missing, and I found those dates, so.
That was the intention.
I figured as much.
That was certainly the intention.
I figured as much, so I just went back. Okay. So, "Dear Mayor Shaleen, Council President Scott, and honorable members of the council, the members of the planning board see that you believe in this city and its potential as, and we do as well. We recognize that collaboration between ourselves, private developers, city staff, and the city council is the way to move the city of Lewiston forward to a more prosperous future. It is imperative that we work in tandem and trust, in tandem and trust, to proactively plan for and invite development that fully realizes this city's potential. We desire to work with you to develop, enact, and clarify a process and build an understanding that actively supports this goal." Okay. Comments, questions? Shorten it? It looks okay to me. I mean, we got to start somewhere, so. Michael?
I didn't have any problem with it, it actually flowed very well as an opening paragraph, and I think it was some of the longer paragraphs that I was a little concerned with.
Okay. All right, well, we'll get to those. Okay. Josh?
The only thing I would suggest is possibly removing the word "private" from "private developers," so it reads, "Between ourselves, developers, city staff, and city council."
Okay. So, let's take out "private." Yeah, because they don't necessarily have to, all right, okay.
That's fine.
So, delete "private." Okay.
One edit, just to shorten sentences, so, "that fully realizes this city's potential," just to say Lewiston's potential, rather than this city's.
Yeah.
I was also just trying to drive Lewiston home.
Okay, down to move, to move this city's?
Yeah, so just put Lewiston's. That's great, she's got it.
Okay. All right, so, alrighty. So, we'll go on to the next one, and Amy had a comment on that one, but I'll read the paragraph first before I read her comments. "We recognize there, that there has been frustration caused by tension around emergent development proposals, most recently, the former Martell School at 860 Lisbon Street. From our perspective," I added a comma after "perspective," "this tension often stems from a central root, where the desire to rezone for a potential project in early discussions must be weighed against concerns from residents in the community regarding whether rezoning will bring about a project that does not contribute to quality of life. We have been, we have seen frustration boil over from every party, citizens, board members, developers, and counselors, to nobody's benefit and to the detriment of the city as a whole. We want to acknowledge the mistrust in people and process this has created in our community, and we want to use the tools we have to restore that trust." So, let me read what Amy's comments are, and then we'll get to. "In this paragraph, it identifies the root issue to be rezoning. However, to me, the root issue is that the process was not transparent enough to include planning board as a collaborative peer, sharing all necessary information so we would collectively make a good decision on behalf of the city." I propose that we delete the highlighted sentence, so she, she deleted, yeah, "from our perspective, this tension, that whole sentence."
Can you highlight it, since you've already got it? Thanks.
So, that is, I honestly agree, because that really is the root of the problem, is not the transparency, not necessarily rezoning or that kind of thing. I think the transparency issue has been our, the problem. Roger?
Didn't we get the inclination that the rezoning was the issue as far as Martell was concerned, that we were a bunch of amateurs for doing what we did?
But that's, that has to do with rezoning, that, you know, not the first issue, that the prob, the transparency issue deals with the fact that they had executive sessions, discussions that were made, not made public.
Well, I agree with you there, you know.
And then, the rezoning part has to do with when we were looking at rezoning Lisbon Street, and staff said, "Go to CB," and during our discussions, we said, "We prefer to leave it at OR," so that it gives us, us, the city, more control over what can go in there. If we put CB, automatically, they can put in a gas station, and, and we wanted to make sure that, that that was a limitation that, that would not be allowed without, you know, doing contract zone or whatever, that type of thing.
But I believe there was also discussion from the city council saying that because we did what we did.
Oh, yeah, we were amateurs. Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's, that's what we have to refute.
Okay. So, do we want to do it here, or do we want to see about, about putting it somewhere else?
I think there's a couple others who want to weigh in.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm move, I'm going to move down. I'm letting Roger speak. Josh, do you have any comments regarding this?
Alex set his hands up first.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think there's a wording issue here, because this was a sentence that got pulled from our previous conversation, actually, that people highlighted to bring in. I think we ended up editing this one, so the meaning changed. I don't think we were saying it was the central root of the problem. I think really what this was speaking towards is, this is a scenario, this is the scenario that this issue, this sort of...
It's a good example of.
It's a, it's a, it's a common example of when this comes up.
Then perhaps the root, the word rooting.
Root needs to go.
Root needs to go.
Root was not the right word for this, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so that's, that's the issue, is that, that root is not, so, the tension from a central root, and, and that's really not, that central root is really lack of transparency.
It's, yeah, it's more this tension often, often occurs in this scenario.
Right.
Because I think it's the intention of this.
Okay, so how do we want to re-read, rewrite that sentence?
You can also still get rid of it, I just wanted to give that extra clarity.
I think we can, you know, yeah, okay. Michael, and then Shanna?
I agree with Amy in part. There's something awkward about the sentence, and I think central root leads into the awkwardness. There's something there that I think should be in that paragraph, that if we just simply take it completely away, it would be missing.
Okay.
And to talk to the point that Roger just brought up with the subsequent rezoning of the same parcel, that has a causal link to the first action, and that, and that's the concern that I had, because, right on the heels of the first decision, had it transpired differently, we would have been seeing that rezoning request, and that could have opened up another whole can of worms. So, it does have an integral component. Obviously, that wasn't the impetus to the letter, but it, it does play all, it's interwoven into the same thing.
Okay. Shanna?
So, some of this is, some of the purpose behind this paragraph, in terms of why it was asked to be in there and outlined in the first place, was because there was a desire to give a tangible example of what we see as the issue. I couldn't agree more with, like, central root is the wrong word, and if we are using central root, Amy's language is the right language. What I would just add is, and I really do not want this to get lost in the bigger perspective, and the more that we hone in on Martell property slash 860, because on one piece it's a property, and one piece it's a rezoning of a, of an address and parcel, and not about the building or use, that was fundamentally the issue, is when you said the preceding issue, part of my gut instinct was, oh, you mean the one on Farwell? Because this originated, this issue of having additional information about a potential that is not a proposal for us to act on, but is rather a concept that council knows something about, and if we made a particular rezone of a parcel, would be beneficial to a potential, so it's very different than when we have a proposal in front of us for a development, and somebody's saying, "We're going to do this, this will be the use, and we need a contract rezone for this." We're a, the public is able to come, we're able to debate the use of that property, whether the contract rezone makes sense or not.
Okay. So, so let's get this sentence rewritten. Okay? I understand, you know, we're just...
So...
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'm wondering if, just to what Sheena mentioned and others, do, I think we just need to explicitly state it, then, to say that, and if I'm hearing this correctly, "So, we recognize there's been frustration caused by tension or emergent development," to really actually say, "Where there has been lack of communication, and in our perspective, lack of transparency." Example being Martell, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. So, I think we have to, it might come out harsh at the outset of the letter, but it's my understanding, it's been the lack of communication and lack of transparency. Example being Martell.
Does Amy maybe offer us the language? Can I take a shot at a proposed?
Sure. I don't think she did, but go ahead.
Well, I think she gives us some. So, from our perspective, this tension occurs when a lack of transparency and inclusion of the planning board as a collaborative peer.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. From our perspective, comma, "This tension often stems from a lack of transparency and inclusion..."
Wait a minute.
...of the planning board as a collaborative peer. Period.
Can we say collaborative partner?
Sure.
Yeah, instead of peer, partner?
And I don't, I don't think there's, I think you can cut the rest of what's highlighted. I think it'll go into the frustration and the latter half of the point that Amy makes, the letter makes, and others places, without it needing to be in this paragraph.
Okay, so, we delete from where the desire to rezone for potential blah, 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 to quality of life?
Yep.
So, delete that whole stuff. Okay, so, what we're reading is, instead, "From our perspective, this tension often stems from a lack of transparency and lack of inclusion of the planning board as a collaborative partner. We have seen frustration boil over from every party," yeah, I think that, I think that's more...
Josh.
Yep, absolutely, Josh.
So, just the, the couple of things here, I'm just wondering if we could possibly cross out frustration caused by tension, and just keep that, we recognize there's been tension around emergent development proposals, and then switching the other...
The first sentence?
Mention of frustration to tension as well. So, we have seen tension boil over from every other party. I'm just trying to, the frustration wording is, and the only other thing I would bring up is, when we say, "Tension stems from a lack of transparency and lack of inclusion," possibly, the way that Amy had it worded was that the process was not transparent enough. I think we should be naming the process there, as opposed to, simply because the, the issue is that the process and the way that it's set up, is set up in a way that can't, it can't be transparent.
So, third line?
Yeah.
"This tension often stems from the process not being transparent enough," and a lack of, could it work that way, Josh?
Yeah, "not being transparent enough to include the planning board as a collaborative peer."
To include the planning board?
As a collaborative partner.
As a collaborative partner.
Are those not two separate things? The way you just framed it, it words it as one?
I mean, they're, they're connected.
So, we need to remove from...
Sentence before.
Yeah, this, yeah, right there. Uh-huh.
Because right now, the process doesn't allow, allow for us to be considered a collaborative partner, basically.
Right, well, I mean, we can, but if, they haven't been using the...
I wonder if it's "not being transparent enough," comma, "and the planning board as a collaborative partner."
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, that's fine, too. Yeah, absolutely. We just want to name that, there's a systemic...
Also, just a heads up, one, one of the things that we were thinking about when we wrote this up was that, and the reason frustration was in there is that, that, that it's a two-way street, right? And so, just make sure that when we're doing the rewrite here, that it isn't like, we're holding the tension. I think there's tension on both parties, and it would be really good to make sure that's acknowledged in some way, but with the second sentence, with like, "Tension stems from the process not being transparent enough," at least in my mind...
Makes it sound like it's just our tension.
It's just our tension.
It's not in-including, not and-including.
Yeah.
But tension is then included in the fourth sentence to say, that this, this is, the, the effects of this process have, have basically affected everyone, the private citizens, developers, staff, community member.
We qualify the tension in the first paragraph, and in the fourth, we clarify who...
Right.
Is experiencing that, and that's pretty inclusive. Yep.
Okay.
One paragraph down.
All right, two paragraphs down, this is two. Okay. Paragraph three. "The planning board is here to assist both staff and leadership in managing the actions relevant to the current and future needs of the city of Lewiston as they relate to land use and plan, land use planning and code. We strive to do this while holding community and economic development goals as the guiding vision within the framework of the comprehensive plan in our shared planning sessions. We, as a body, have not denied nor added further restrictions to any proposed development project brought before the current board. In many cases, we have removed restrictions on proposed development projects while keeping within the spirit of the comprehensive plan, the district, the design district overlay, the needs of the neighborhoods the projects are proposed for, and the people each development proposal is intended to serve. We endeavor to be a trusted partner to all stakeholders in this mission." We endeavor to be a trusted partner to all stakeholders in this mission."
It's good and it's wordy.
It's, it's wordy, it's very, it's, it's kind of wordy, and...
I was just wondering if you could make two paragraphs out of that.
Just, we as a body, that's the second paragraph.
That could be the second paragraph.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't quite sure of the...
Yep. Is, um, I should know this, is there a statement from our charge that we can just copy and steal, and put in here?
We had it in there, and then we took it out.
Oh, apologies.
I think we thought this sounded better.
I mean, I think it's lovely, I just want to make sure we're rooted in fact, if you will.
Yep, yep.
Um, so if there's anything that we quote, or just an excerpt to underscore, there's a sense we did.
Yeah, I think this, this, I think separating it makes it, makes it a little bit better.
This was six pages of content before we cleaned up what...
Yeah, I mean, down to two and a half, you know?
This is short.
Okay, anybody else?
It was from what...
Again, just a truncating to say, rather than, "Needs of the city of Lewiston," we could just say, "Relevant to Lewiston's current and future needs."
Okay, and the...
Relevant to Lewiston's...
Current and future needs.
And then delete this.
Can, and can we get rid of, as they relate to the land code and land planning and land use planning and code?
Well, we're not planning services, we are just pretty specifically planning codes, that's why we qualify.
Okay.
I think that did make it a little shorter.
Okay, all right, that sounds, all right.
What's the sizing of the previous paragraph? I think it shrunk, uh, when the changes were made. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah, because it was ten lines earlier.
Right, we, yeah, okay. All right. Next one. "Given the recent outcry over the disposition of the former Martel School, we want to reflect on the choices that lead to the, that led to the current situation and identify areas that would benefit from improved impros-process." I don't like this.
Can I ask a question before you read further?
Sure.
So, some of the comments that you all shared about that opening paragraph, this is where that seems to matter, and so if you were, if you collectively were of the mindset, we don't need to give specific examples, and we should cut to the chase about what we'd like, then the next preceding, like, five bullet points would get cut out of content before you read them. And that is where your lengthiness and wariness. It's a reflection of the desire from this group, and I, maybe a week has calmed us in a way that we can all benefit from, because as Alex and I were tackling this on Friday, that was our mindset, too, but we wanted to honor the original intent and request. But I think if the goal of us is to say, there is tension, we'd like to work better with you, this is what our request is, and we don't need to tit-for-tat or explain, and, and part of what my feelings are about why I think this should get cut, this whole section, is because I think it makes it about Martel School, and for me, this is about Farwell, this is about all of the commercial corridor rezonings, and I, and I think it engages a conversation that doesn't need to continue.
Josh?
Um, I would like to, uh, agree wholeheartedly with Shannon that, and also just, um, sorry, Member Cox, and, and also, um, ju- just state that I would even remove the recent outcry piece, so basically, you know, we want to reflect on choices that, that, or not even choices, but we want to reflect on, on, on a process in which, um, you know, we can share...
Right, right. So, so we delete this whole, uh, bullet points with the dates and the whole, the whole, okay?
Before you do, before you do that...
Okay.
Um, I, I, uh, trying to collect my thoughts here. Uh, I agree with, uh, Member Cox that, uh, this is more than just about one property, uh, even though I was, you know, uh, earlier I said, uh, previous meant the disposition, uh, as opposed to the rezoning.
Yeah.
Wasn't thinking of Farwell or Sebastian Street, it was the actual address, I believe, uh, but it is a good point that, uh, it sort of started there, and that's what led to the boiling up. Uh, what I don't want to lose from this section, could be very much shorter, probably, is that, uh, the, the portion in the opening, uh, paragraph that says, that led to the current situation and identify areas that could benefit from improved process, I'm hoping for something in this letter that talks to improving the process, uh, through, uh, collaboration.
Can we add that to this paragraph, since it says we endeavor to...
I want, the paragraph, the sentence that you have highlighted currently, you could cut that and place that at the top of what follows all your highlight, and I think it might go in very nicely to the next section we haven't gotten to, yeah.
Whoops.
And just like, put there as a placeholder for a minute and see if we're...
You gotta do, you, you gotta copy it first.
I thought I cut it.
I don't know.
Yeah, you did cut it.
I don't know.
You were doing shift instead of control, but I do it all the time.
Let me just do undo.
Undo, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
In, uh, in defense of death by bullet points here...
We went back and forth on this.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, 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 I mean, uh, I, uh, I agree with the sentiment of like, oh my god, it, it was much longer at the start of our editing session.
Okay, so, so...
The reason, the reason that it, it, it has some, uh, importance, I think, is sort of what Michael is bringing up in terms of saying that we've, we've identified these things, like, we're not just pulling these out of thin air, and so, as long as we can make sure that we encapsulate that in our, in our recommendations, that like, we're not just going like, you don't talk to us, you need to talk to us more, it's like, no, we, we like, looked at how this happened, we wanted to make the best decision based on the information we have, and we came to the conclusion that, you know, your dis, your view on the decision and our view on the decision differed because of the differing information. Not, not because of personal things, it's purely this information thing, so as long as we can make sure that gets captured, and I think that applies to all these previous projects, too. So, let's get rid of the Martel School stuff, but let's make sure that we have the, you know, we've thought about this, we're not just like, pulling ideas out of thin air.
That one sentence that, um, Member Markot just pulled out, preceding the next paragraph, I think does that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have, so we have that sentence, so we're gonna add, "We want to reflect on the choices that led to the current situation and identify areas that could benefit from improve, improving, from an improved process."
I also think it's led, not lead.
That led, yeah, I, I keep, well, it's still, yeah, it should be LED, right? Okay, yep. That's why I keep...
As the council and planning board reached different recommendations regarding...
Well, that's, I gotta read that, we haven't read, we haven't read that one. So, we added, we took it from the beginning of, before the bullet points, and we added it to the beginning of this paragraph. So, that sentence, and then it says, "As the city council and planning board reached different recommendations regarding eight sixty Lisbon Street, it reflected the impact of having varied slash different access to information. Having a shared understanding of this information could have influenced our decision about this process. We desire to work with all stakeholders to reach a conclusion that best serves this community. However, we cannot come to the best conclusion with imperfect information."
Uh, very different is like us saying, what do you want word choice for that to be? That's not intended to read that way, it's a discussion point.
Okay. Which, which word, a two-word?
Of having a varied slash different access to information was, was like, what is the sentiment that you all collectively want to convey there? Those are the two...
I think it would be incomplete access to information, and eight sixty Lisbon Street would be regarding, uh, dispositions on, uh, recent dispositions on properties.
I would argue that.
Oh, you need an "in" in front of your...
No, I'd leave that out.
Well, and I'm, I'm happy to remove the eight sixty, I actually think it's great to remove eight sixty Lisbon Street, but it's not just disposition, it's also rezones.
You're correct, so...
And acquisition.
Okay, so, yeah, so instead of putting, so what I hear is, "As the city council and planning board, um, reach different recommendations regarding, uh, acquisition and disposi- dispositions of, of properties."
Acquisition, disposition, and rezoning.
And rezoning of properties.
You're doing great, I know.
Thank you.
Really? Oh, she does, she's doing terrific. Um, maybe I'll hire her to be my second guest.
I do type all day.
And then it has to become, it reflects and not reflected?
Yeah.
It reflects the impact...
So, that's, that's a period, and then it reflects...
Properties, period.
Yeah, and then it reflects the impact of having incomplete access to information. Having share, a shared understanding of this information could have influenced our decision about this property.
So we have to change that.
So we'd say, could influence our decisions?
Yes.
Period.
Having shared understanding...
Of this information.
Of information.
Yeah, because it's not this, because we're not talking about it specifically.
Okay, of information, of...
Could influence?
Could influence, okay.
Our decisions.
Our decisions, period. Right, our decisions, put an S, period.
I would just like to go back up to, "As the city council and planning board reached different recommendations regarding acquisition, disposition, and rezoning of properties," and then it just periods. So like, that's not a full sentence.
Yeah, yeah, I think it needed to be comma, it reflects.
Okay, all right. All right, and then the last sentence is, "We desire to work with all stakeholders to reach a conclusion that best serves this community. However, we cannot come to the best conclusion with imper- imperfect information."
Again, I would just say, best serves Lewiston.
Yep.
Keep it coming, girl, keep it coming. Yep.
And imperfect, possibly incomplete.
Best serves Lewiston, okay.
Yeah, I think that one should also be incomplete, if it was up above.
Yep.
Spell drunk. Oh, it's incomplete.
All right, so let's see. So we say, "We want to reflect on the choices that led to the current situation and identify areas that could benefit from, uh, in, from an improved process. As the city council and planning board reached different recommendations regarding acquisition, disposition, and rezoning of properties, it reflects the impact of having incomplete access to information."
It's just incomplete information and no access?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Incomplete information, so just access to. Okay.
And it reflects, I would say, we feel, it reflects...
Uh, yeah.
That feels appropriate.
Yeah, because we do believe, we he, we believe, yeah.
We think, we think, we're not feeling, we're not believing.
Right.
There we go.
Absolutely, thank you, okay. Okay, so we think it reflects the impact of having incomplete information. Sounds funny.
I think it's good.
I think it sounds funny because you've read it four times.
Okay. Having a shared understanding of information could influence our decisions. "We desire to work with all stakeholders to reach a conclusion that best serves Lewiston. However, we cannot come to the best conclusion with incomplete information." I like that.
I wonder, uh, sorry to do this, but, uh, second and last sentence, I think, sort of say the same thing a little bit, um, so, uh, you know, shared understanding could influence our decisions, like, for good, for bad, like, I think it needs a qualification, maybe, or just needs to go away, um, because then we say, we the desire to work with all stakeholders to reach a good...
Having a shared understanding of information supports good decision-making?
Yeah, something like that.
Supports good decision-making, yeah.
And we desire to make good decisions, and we need information to do so.
Yeah.
Could we just delete this?
I think that's...
Yeah, I guess that's a duplication.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so put a period after Lewiston.
Nice.
All right. Okay.
Even though it's not grammatically correct, you push enter, so the next paragraph starts on the next page, so we can see it all at once.
Okay.
May I just support a comment? Because we say information a lot.
We do.
Well, now we're down to two in this paragraph.
Yeah, we, we've, we've reduced some.
Could we say, rather than, what do you think?
Data relevance?
Facts or knowledge base, like, that we all are entering with the same... So, having a shared understanding of information...
Yeah, I, it, it, just data, just data. I think, uh, you know, having a shared, uh, understanding of, of relevant data?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, so instead of information, relevant data.
Love it.
Great.
Supports good decision-making, yeah. Okay, yeah, it, it was a little too many informations.
Too much information.
Too much information, yes, okay. So, next one. "We see greater cooperation between all parties as the best past for, path forward. We know this because joint sessions between the planning board and city council, including the most recent session regarding the Riverfront Master Plan and the previous joint session to set forth pro-business planning priorities, have proven fruitful for both bo- bodies." Too much detail. I think if, if we, let me finish reading. Uh, let's see, "Lewiston is changing, and in the coming years, our work as the planning board and city council will lay the groundwork for important efforts such as the planned development on Island Point, where redundant, continued work on the projects outlined in the Riverfront Island Master Plan, and encouragement of commercial development on key city corridors."
Can I speak to why we questioned whether it would be redundant or not?
"We need to support solid processes and robust communication to support these vital initiatives." Okay, yeah, absolutely, I just think that we're talking, we've said Riverfront Master Plan twice, and Island Point, it, it's, maybe we need to, I don't, that's just my...
They're, they're talking about two separate things, I think that's what you were probably gonna say.
Yeah, well, and, so the, the work to do development, whether it's rezoning or all the other things for Riverfront Island Master Plan, is a body of work. Island Point is within that, so I get how that might feel duplicative, but specifically, there was a separate strategy, separate action, that was high priority and urgent in that presentation, about the planned acquisition and land banking of properties. So, we're talking acquisition versus like, development and planning, and when I heard them say that, if we and the council are gonna be have to, of, be of the same mind of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to acquire properties on Island Point, that is its own separate thing that we better be on the same page about, and felt like a really tangible example.
Okay, that's, you know, I mean, I'm just...
I think, do we include tangible examples or not, is a question that you might be having.
To shorten that nasty, long sentence that I think I wrote, apologies. Um, so, uh, first of all, it's a parenthetical statement, and we use commas, so maybe we should use an M dash instead, like the long dashes, um, so, it should be, "Planning board and city council, M dash, not a comma, uh, including recent sessions regarding..."
Yeah, uh, yeah, we don't need to say...
We don't need to say multiple session, yeah.
Including, yeah, recent session, just recent session.
And we, they'll know what the R I M P is, right?
Yeah, we could call it RIMP, for sure, right?
Yeah.
But if this is going to the public?
Okay, let's keep it like, and then, and...
When this goes to the public.
And then do it down here, Rin.
Yeah.
No if, maybe, no if.
Yeah, if you put parentheses after the first Riverfront Island Master Plan, and then...
And, uh, ses- it, sessions regarding Riverfront, and, just delete everything up to pro-business. Doesn't quite read right, but like, something of that length, I think, is what we need.
And identifying pro-business planning priorities, that's what that session did, the bucketing session, this is the bucket session.
Right, right, our baskets.
Yes, that's right, the baskets.
Perhaps we remove, "We know this be- because," just, "Joint sessions between the planning board and city council."
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. So, Sheena, I don't know if this was your point earlier.
"We see greater co-op- cooperation between all parties as the best path forward. Joint sessions between the planning board and city council, including recent sessions regarding the Riverfront Master Plan, and identifying pro-business planning priorities..."
And dash.
"... comma, yeah, dash, have proven fruitful for both bodies." I like that. "Lewiston is changing, and in the coming years, our work as the planning board and city council will lay the groundwork for important efforts such as, uh, should we put a dash there, or..."
Can we just remove the such as?
Okay. Efforts. But we need some kind of...
The important efforts of Island Point.
Okay, of...
Work outlined in the RIMP.
Wait, for the...
Important efforts of...
No, sorry, I think it was, "Will lay groundwork for important efforts."
For planned development.
For the planned development of Island Point, continued work on the projects outlined in the RIMP, and... For the planned development of Island Point, continued work on the projects outlined in the RIMP and encouragement.
There should be a, there should be a the, yeah. Island Point, continued work on the projects outlined in the RIMP and encouragement of commercial development on key city corridors. We need to support solid processes and robust communication to support, too many supports.
Drive these vital initiatives?
Yeah.
Yes.
The better word. Okay.
Getting five PM vocab, folks.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Five PM on a.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I think, okay, let me reread it again. We see greater cooperation between all parties as the best path forward, path forward. How could you told I was French? Joint sessions between the planning board and city council, including recent sessions regarding the Riverfront Master Plan and identifying pro-business planning priorities have proven fruitful for both bodies. Lewiston is changing and in coming years, our work as the planning board and city council will lay the groundwork for important efforts for the planned development of Island Point. Continued work on the projects outlined in the RMP, R I M P, and the, and encouragement of commercial development on key city corridors. We need to support solid processes and robust communication to drive these vital initiatives, like it.
I feel like we double, double forward, we have like eight up there, so, let's see, where was it? Uh, Lewiston is changing and the coming years.
Well, we got planning board and city council, planning board and city council.
Uh, groundwork for important efforts, for important efforts for, we need to reword that. So after groundwork.
Including, for important efforts, including the plan development?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could the top planning board and city council be our two bodies?
Yeah.
I would, I would also just pause it and I don't think we want to stick more words in there, but, but we probably should mention the, you know, overhauling the zoning restrictions within the residential zones as well.
Yeah, but that.
I haven't heard that as a clear shared priority.
Yeah, I really don't think so, I don't. Okay, so, okay, so the joint sessions between our two bodies.
Whoops.
Including recent sessions, blah, 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 blah.
You could get rid of the second bodies.
Yeah, have proven fruitful.
Okay, have proven, yeah, fruitful.
Do we remove Lewiston is changing and, or do we leave it in?
No, I think I like that. I like that, I think it is changing and we need to, and I think.
That work is important.
Yeah, and I think at that point, planning board, city council, I think is, is good. I think, I think that one's good.
Can we do, God, Mike, sorry, can we just take out fruit, or the for both after fruitful? Because, yes, it's been fruitful for both parties, but it's more importantly been fruitful for these efforts.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, fantastic.
Another paragraph feels good.
Okay, sounds good.
I would just make a note for everybody that we should probably talk into these as much as we can too, because I was just realizing, I was talking at the screen.
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
If it helps, we can look at that one over there for people on this side.
Right, okay.
For people with twenty, twenty-one hundred vision.
Okay. Alright, so, Amy has a comment on the second bullet point in this. So I'm gonna read the first sentence and the two bullet points, because they're, they're, go together and then, then it's something else. We propose the following points as high-level guiding principles. Should we have just bullet points or one and two? Just, just think about it. All parties strive for language that reflects the importance of the work we do and supports an image of professionalism. We suggest this because we recognize that members of the planning board and the city council have spoken harshly out of frustration. We have not, but they have. That's just my, my two cents. While the sentiments.
I feel like we did have some frustrated sentiments shared in this room. I do.
Okay, while the sentiments are valid, we believe that we can only maintain the trust of Lewiston with level-headed discourse. All parties prioritize the free and open sharing of information. When a party has a request, has to request additional information, it delays the proc, the process, not a process. But let's, let's not change that right now. When a party makes a decision based on incomplete information, it might result in poor or incongruous outcomes and, um, let's see, Amy's comment is the last bullet on the page. Consider replacing the first sentence, which is all parties strive for language that reflects the importance of the work we do and supports an image of professionalism.
I like Amy's language better. I say hard swap.
Well, she didn't give, oh yeah, proposed language, all parties commit to professionalism and respect in our spoken and written words to reflect the importance of the work we do.
Chef's kiss on that.
Yes.
I think it's great.
Okay. So, do you guys want numbers or just continue bullet points?
I did not put numbers in there intentionally to make sure that it doesn't look like a hierarchy.
Prioritization, okay, that's fine.
Because they're equally important, just one of them had to go first.
Sure, so, and then in the second one, the second line, information, it delays not a process, the process.
I changed it while you were talking.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on, on this one? Okay, fantastic.
I actually had some.
Josh, okay, well, I mean, I asked and then I'm looking and nobody's got a hand up, so I'm, I'm moving right along.
You must be quicker, you guys in speed mode today.
Absolutely fair.
Oh yeah, you guys gotta get, get on the stick here.
The only, the only part, you know, I'm reading like, while these sentiments are valid, we believe we can only maintain. Could we just take the while these sentiments are valid out? And then, and so it reads that we believe that we can only maintain the trust of Lewiston with level-headed discourse.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we don't need the sentiments.
Validating is a question that we had too.
Yeah, that was in there, yeah, to, to make sure that people feel like they're getting heard, so.
Again, you know, we don't need the feelings, sentiments is more like a feeling.
I love evolution, cut it.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Michael? I thought you raised your hand.
I'm baffled.
Okay, next.
A really vocal shoulder shrug.
Okay. Alright, so again, I'm gonna read the first sentence and then the two bullet points. We recognize that the preceding points are aspirational as well as subjective. So, we also propose the following actions as tangible next step. We encourage approaching future impact development opportunities in partnership and would welcome an invitation to joint workshops from the council around important or notable decisions that both of our groups will, or ha, have or will weigh in on. We do this in the spirit of efficiency, good communication, and creating a shared understanding that lends to consistent and positive decisions regarding development. We endeavor to be part of sharing a message broadly that invites development, enhances quality of life, and attracts investment. We look forward to partnering with the city council to create a joint statement regarding our shared vision for development in the city. My only comment is, it's not just joint workshops, it's the executive sessions, I mean, the joint workshops are great, but it's the executive sessions that got us into this world of hurt with eight sixty Lisbon and other properties. But I, I think that's, I don't know how we put that in there, but it isn't just the joint workshops because they're public and the executive session is stuff that's behind closed doors, and that's what we didn't get.
Workshops or sessions?
Or executive sessions.
Yeah. And then I think that sentence needs to get smaller, it's very long.
Yeah. Okay, comments, other, you know, well, you continue, Alex.
Let's see.
Fastest to say with.
The council around important or notable, I think we could just choose one, one or the other.
Yeah, important, yeah, just put important.
Decisions that both of our, that our.
That we both?
That we both, yeah, there we go.
Will weigh in on. Have or will weigh, I don't think have, it's will weigh.
We don't want it to be past tense, right?
No, it's will weigh on, right.
I think we could also just say and would welcome joint workshops, so we don't need to say welcome and invitation to.
That's a procedural thing.
Yeah, it's part of why we didn't say explicitly, we want you to invite us to executive.
Technically, they have to invite us.
Got it, okay.
Okay, that's, that's the technical.
Us inviting them to invite us.
We don't want this to sound like we're demanding access to executive sessions, that we're demanding, things that we do not have the right or ability to demand.
Right, because, because I can call a joint session, I mean, I can call it an executive session and invite them, but they don't have to show up because we're, we're junior to, to them, we're not. Other comments?
I think it should be joint workshops and executive sessions.
And, not, or, okay, yeah, okay.
Because I, I agree that what you said just a few seconds ago, that that's what got us here.
That's what got us in this, in this mess is because there was an, there were executive, and, and I don't know if we can say, how we could say it, we don't want to be in all of the executive sessions.
Yeah.
Well, we just need to be in, in, in the, you know, the ones that relate to us.
Call us when the dust settles.
Those pertaining to.
Right, which that does, the sentence goes on to say that.
Okay, and that, that's good then.
Well, and I would just say, ca, case in point, the executive session regarding Martel that created all the consternation, right? All of that content that was relevant, that was information that could have been shared with us, that would have potentially influenced our decision making.
Heck, yeah.
Was shared at a city council meeting on public record at a later point, and so, I'm, and this, this is something that Alex and I actually went back and forth on, I mean, I'm fine with the language, but we don't actually need access to executive session, we don't need to be in there. We need to know that the relevant details that would inform our decision making are shared with us prior to us being asked to, to make a decision, and that can be a summary, that could be us being invited to an executive session, but they, they found a way to share that information outside of executive session just after we had deliberated.
Yeah, but that was after.
After the whole mess.
The situation that came to light with the public, you know, everybody was, you know, he and Hawn and everything else, then they wanted to clarify the record and say, alright, this is the reason why we did what we did in a public session, but had it not been for that, we would have never known.
We would know.
Our point is, is the ability to make that information.
That's right.
If they, if, if a body says this information is really important and we want it to be on the record because this is why we made this decision, and we are saying, great, if you think information is important and can be shared, share it with us, and so, they proved that that is possible.
Absolutely.
And so we're saying, great, plan to make that work in advance.
The, the, the only issue that I have with the wording that you're using is that an executive session, we wouldn't, you know, if, if it had not been for the big brouhaha with the public, we would not have, they would not have made it public, and they made it public after the fact, which, which was not relevant at that point to our decision. We couldn't go back and say, oh, well, now that we know what, what they said, we, you know, we need to be in the planning session. And, and that's, which is the, the executive session, that's, that's the planning, the pre, pre, before it comes before us. Josh?
Basically, the, the reasons why those things are kept in executive session is the reasons why they can't be released to the public before a decision is made, do you know what I mean? So it's, so we, so I don't think the mechanism, like, because of the way the executive session works, I don't think that there's a way for them to share that information outside of executive session.
Not without making it to the, open to the general public, which then defeats the purpose of having had the executive session.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
I guess I, sorry, I can wait until.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
No, Mike's been waiting.
I was just gonna say, in part, that's a whole lot of damage control, the after the fact.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And before anybody expects a charter authorized, or, maybe authorized is not the right word, but where the planning board is obligated to provide a recommendation, it should also be obligated that we have full information regarding what it is that we're making a recommendation on. Because if we don't have the facts that another body has, we're gonna come into different decisions again and again, and the planning board's direction, vision for the future of Lewiston could run counter to another body, namely the city council. And recognizing that is why they need to have full disclosure. And whether it's at the front end of a process, in the middle of the process, or even at the tail end of the process of, let's say, executive sessions by the city council, the planning board needs to be apprised of all of those issues, not just asking us to be the rubber stamp. And I know where I can find a few nice big ones to put right there in front of me, if that's what, how we're gonna continue going about doing business here.
Jen?
First, Madam Chair, please forgive me as I am going to have to leave. I have a prior commitment for work at six in Lisbon and I'm gonna be late. And I have complete faith not only in the current content, but the process being used to finalize the content will gladly affix my name to whatever result this body gets to in my absence. And, this is important for me to say for myself on the record, is I believe that what we need as it relates to the first bullet is the information relevant for us making a good decision, which might not be full information, which might not be all information in an executive session, and so I think, and this language might be just the right fit, but I, I think saying we need to be included in executive session is the wrong request, and I don't feel that way. I respect executive session for my own record. As a member of this planning board, it's important that folks know that that's my position. And I think there are many times where a council would find that is the best mechanism for us to be on the same page, right? Okay, sorry.
So perhaps what we say is like, we would welcome, you know, information, the relevant information, I'm trying to pieces, like, we recommend, welcome the relevant information through methods such as, but not that, not that, so like, I think, keep, keep the beginning, that we encourage approaching future impactful development opportunities in partnership and welcome, or, and request that we receive, oh God, I.
No, we can request because they, that.
So, so we'd welcome.
And would welcome.
Sharing of information, whether through joint workshop, you know, whether, yeah.
Yeah, whether through.
Invitation to a joint workshop or executive session, or sharing the results of.
No, I don't think, I think that's enough.
I'd just leave it that way.
Just leave it the way it is. An invitation, so, we encourage approaching the future impactful development opportunities in partnership and would welcome sharing, the, the sharing of information, where, semi-colon maybe, instead of a comma?
Or just nothing?
Or nothing.
It just goes straight.
Whether through an invitation to joint workshops, or, I think it's, it was or, and I think. Or executive sessions with the council around important decisions that we both will need to weigh in on.
I think we said that, like, we encourage approaching impactful development in partnership.
Important decisions, period.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
May I?
Absolutely.
So, just in the second line, Christine, to say partnership and welcome, I think we can take the word would out. And partnership and welcome.
Yeah.
And then, just consistent here at the bottom, if we say regarding Lewiston's development, if we want to go so far as to say Lewiston's development and future.
Sure.
But at least qualified development.
Yeah?
I would just, I just don't know if there's, I guess, there's probably no other mechanism in which we could get this information.
There is none.
Okay.
Not, not to my knowledge.
I would just, I would just maybe just put unless, like, after executive sessions, unless, with the council, unless there's another method to get this information, right?
No, I don't, I don't think we, no, I think we just leave it, if there's another mechanism, they'll come up with it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't think we need to give them that, that excuse or that, that.
Right, at this moment in time, this is what we see the opportunities are, and they can give us other opportunities.
Other options, you know, if there are other options.
It's just a proposal.
Right.
Yeah, we propose the actions.
Okay, so we encourage approaching future impactful development opportunities in partnership and welcome the sharing of information, whether through an invitation. and welcome the sharing of information, whether through an invitation to joint workshops or executive sessions, do we really need with the council?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so, cause it's kind of.
And then regarding?
Around, uh, regard, yeah, regarding.
Important information.
In, important decisions.
Okay.
We do this in the spirit of efficiency, good communication, and creating a shared understanding that lends to consistent and positive decisions regarding Lewiston's development and future. I like that. Comments? Michael?
Uh, the reason I asked for and earlier instead of or.
Yeah.
Is because.
How about and/or?
Yeah, we can do that.
Maybe, uh, but the reason was so that, uh, the response would not be, well, we gave you the joint workshop, but we couldn't tell you in a joint workshop what it is that you really wanted to know to make the best decision.
But we didn't, to, for the disposition of eight sixty, which is the, the thing that got us into, into trouble, we didn't have a joint workshop. We had a joint workshop on the rezoning of three, three sixty, eight sixty. Your jacket's on.
But, but what, but, uh, again, certain, uh, and that was a quick, I, I actually remember the parcel during the workshop.
Mm.
Because it went by fast, and I already had in my mind.
Mm-hmm.
What was happening here, so obviously, uh, a, uh, fact, uh, faction of the city council may have had a vision, a view, uh, for that parcel, uh, we may have a different one, or we may have been blindsided, and it didn't really manifest until the night that we had it on our agenda to rezone, uh, that's why we need to have a shared vision, a, a quick workshop, uh, where stuff is drafted out on a sheet of paper, and what do you think of this, what do you think of that, and you've got, uh, nine members from here, eight, including the mayor, from, uh, the city council's side, so you've got, uh, nine and eight, seventeen people, uh, trying to do stuff by committee, uh, in very short order, uh, I, I think we need to have a better understanding between the two bodies, know what each body's, uh, vision is, because that's where the friction, uh, stems from.
Can someone sub in for me? I need to mention this.
Sure.
Yep.
Would qualifying the information to be vital information, rather than just general whatever information?
No.
Pertinent.
Pertinent, maybe.
Yeah, and then I think maybe, not to make it longer, yeah.
Sharing of relevant, pertinent, no, pertinent's fine.
I think pertinent's good, and then, uh, important decisions is pretty general. I think spelling out acquisitions, dispositions, rezoning.
Yeah, why don't we use the phrases we did earlier?
Yeah.
Which were?
Which were.
Acquisition.
Acquisition.
Disposition.
Yeah, acquisition slash dispositions.
Comma, yeah, disposition.
Dispositions and, um.
Resoning.
Rezoning, right.
And there wasn't a hyphen before.
And get rid of, yeah, get rid of important, rezoning decisions.
Sorry, I didn't wanna ruin the flow, but I just wanted to ask the chairman to elevate Alex to a voting member with, um.
Yes, yes, um.
Shanna's.
Yeah, since Shanna, uh, Ms. Cox has left, uh, Alex will be a, the voting member as well this evening, so, fantastic. Okay, I think that that, that reads better, so what's the next one? We endeavor, I honestly, I like that word, but not in that context.
I, I would use a word that, uh, that is the same as demand without being demand. So, which word?
Endeavor.
Something, uh, um.
Okay, so.
We desire, we desire to be part.
We endeavor, we, to be part of a sh-.
Yeah, we desire, I think, it works.
Yeah, desire is better than endeavor.
Yeah.
I mean, I like endeavor, but not in that context. I'm watching more, so I'm watching endeavor right now.
Space shuttle?
No, 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 it's a, a PBS series that's called endeavor.
Yeah, I just wonder if we almost put this sentence first.
Okay.
That seems to be the meaningful one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And then we state the action after that. I'm happy to give this back to Christine, oh, shoot. Okay. I did not, I'm not used to this computer.
Again.
There we go. We're just gonna copy so I don't lose it entirely. Here. Oh, hey.
Delete it.
What is happening?
Yep.
No, it's fine.
You got it.
It's just, it's just you, you've got it twice.
There we go, and then we still have we endeavor.
He just.
Yeah, well, we get, and then we look forward to get.
Delete this list.
Get rid of it, there we go, okay.
Voila.
Then, okay, so we look forward to partnering with the city.
Away from the computer.
We look forward to partnering, partnering with the city council to craft a joint statement regarding our shared vision, really, I mean, why are we, why do we wanna partner and give a joint statement?
That is the comp plan already, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see, I, I'm not particularly interested in a joint statement with them at this time.
I think that's the idea.
Yeah, but.
That's the exact reason why we proposed it.
Okay, it, it's up to everybody, I mean, if you guys wanna leave it in there, I personally.
There's no timeline on it.
Right, but I, you know, I don't see us doing, so is this our closing?
No.
No, there's gonna be another.
It says add an ending here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it says an add an ending, but I mean.
Can, can I just elevate again that, that endeavor needs to be removed?
Yeah.
And changed to desire, or any other word but endeavor?
Should, should we say something that may, maybe is a little less emotional, like we seek, or we're?
Yeah.
We, uh.
Desire has a legal, uh, definition as well.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I'm fine with that.
I like the word seek better.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, so let's go with seek.
Okay, so we seek to give our sharing a message broadly that invites development, enhances quality of life, and attracts investment, that's fine, I mean, if you, yeah, if you guys want a joint statement, that's bold power.
I just think that there's discord, and I think that this is saying, like, there is discord, and we've, it's been addressed, at least in my, from my observation from the city council, that they don't feel that we're on the same page, and that we are amateurs, and so I think coming together makes sense, because I think in the public, we have created discord.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I would just like to also say, state that, that I think several statements have been, have been made out of frustration, including, uh, the, the, the part-time or the amateur statement, right? Like, I, I don't think it necessarily came from, it came from more a place of frustration than it did, uh, more of consternation than, than of judgment, not that it matters, because it feels the same way, um, but, um, at the end of the day, we, several statements have been released, uh, recently about, about, uh, both the.
Several statements from the city council.
From the, from different factions of the city council.
Very quiet.
True, I.
We have not responded, this is our, our response.
Correct, but what I would like to see, he, he personally, is that we do get to a place where we're speaking the same language.
Okay, that's fine, that, that's fine, I mean, I, like I say, I'm, I'm just expressing my, my.
Frustration?
My frustration, and, and if, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, go with the majority. Okay, so a happy ending here.
And if we could make it a few sentences, so it's only two pages, but.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
That seems like a dream.
So what do, in conclusion?
In conclusion?
Well, we gotta conclude, in conclusion.
So this would be the, you know, leaning towards the good faith, um, in, in future, so I'm thinking something along, you know, we, we have no doubt that we will be able to, uh, overcome these communication issues in order to, um, work as a, in our.
The team.
In our overlapping, um, and, and complementary fiduciary responsibilities for the city?
Yeah, I get rid of fiduciary, and I would just say, yeah, in our, in our complimentary roles.
Mm-hmm.
Roles.
I missed.
Okay, so, in conclusion, we have no doubt that we will be able to overcome these communication issues and fulfill our complimentary roles in.
Directing the city of Lewiston.
Furthering development in the city of Lewiston.
Right, that sounds good.
And ushering the, the future suc- the, the, yeah, meeting the, the current needs of our city and ushering in the, the future successes, something.
Yeah. Well, you're saying furthering development, development is future, ushering in future, like, one or the other.
Right.
Well, there's, there's aspects to the comp plan that, that aren't focused on simply economic development.
So, we could just say complimentary roles in ushering in.
Development in.
Complimentary roles ushering in Lewiston's future success.
Okay, yeah, ushering in Lewiston's future success.
The end.
One more sentence, um, I think we have to say something along the lines of, like, we look forward to working on this.
I was gonna say, thank you for your considerations, and we look forward to your reply, or something.
We, we may wanna also just mention in that, in that, um, first sentence, um, working with outside parties as well, you know, something, something, something that's pro-development, something that's, 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 that's pro-business, um, something that's pro more structures that.
Well, how about, how about we put it underneath after?
To.
Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working.
With you.
With you and, uh.
All stakeholders, citizens, developers.
Well, I don't think we need to be.
Or.
Stakehold, stakeholders is, is.
Everybody.
But I think, as I think naming developers.
Okay.
You know, so.
Well, then you don't need stakeholders.
So maybe if we, yeah, 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 so maybe if we just say, we look forward to working with the ca- city, the city council, developers.
Citizens.
Citizens, and all others.
Staff.
And staff.
And staff.
Staff's an important one.
For, for, for the benefit of our.
For the benefit.
Beautiful city.
Beautiful city.
Our beautiful.
Our treasured city.
Treasured.
Our gem on the Andras Goggin, our purple prose.
Oh, you can go on forever.
In, in, in future prosperity.
Yeah.
I, no, I think that, and benefits, I think that's, that's fine.
Should, next to our complimentary roles, should we say our complimentary, I'm trying to fit in, like, civic duties?
Yeah, okay.
Responsibilities.
Roles, yeah.
Civic actors.
Civic roles.
Civic roles, that sounds.
No, that doesn't sound right.
I know. Our, yeah, civic responsibilities, ushering in Lewiston's future success, sounds good to me. Okay.
That's the standing for.
Yeah. All right, so, so are we sending this email, or are we sending this, cause if, if we're sending it as a paper thing, we, you know, you wanna have, like, sincerely or something like that, if you're sending it as an email, you don't generally put sincerely.
I think it's probably gonna go as an email.
It's completely up to you.
I would go with respectfully.
Okay, yeah, respectfully, that, that.
Whoops.
Whoops.
Oh, no.
No.
Eleven point five font.
Well, it's gonna be an email, it doesn't matter, but this is, this is, um.
Change the font.
Yeah, we can change the font.
Hold on, you could just have this be a letter, and you attach it to the email, and then the email says, you know, thank you for considering the letter, respectfully, the planning board.
Right.
Hmm, put it in there, put it, put it in the email, not in the letter.
Okay, yeah, take, take it off, yeah, put it in, okay, so, uh, you wanna do a review?
Does it read at all?
You could do a dramatic reading.
No, 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 I don't mean that, I mean, if you do, if you do, uh, review, and, and like, spell check.
Oh, okay.
And stuff, just to, just to make sure that, you know, if there are any.
I was fixing it as we went.
Okay, well, yeah, you know, there were, you know, sometimes there's double spaces or something.
Let's read through it out loud, cause sometimes things sound funny.
Okay, so let, I'll take, I'll take it, I'll, cause I don't wanna break my neck anymore. Okay. Dear Mayor Shalene, Council President Scott, and honorable members of the council, the members of the planning board see that you believe in this city and its potential, and we do as well. Do we really want that, or, or just as?
As we do.
As we do, just as we do. Okay.
And should planning board be capitalized?
Yes, I think we need to do it clearly.
Okay.
Do you want me to take it back and read it?
Yeah, go ahead, read it.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
I think we want this to say, as we do, not and we do.
Yeah.
Just, just as.
As we, okay.
And then where's?
Capital, uh, first line.
I think planning.
Yes, that was consistently what we did the rest of the.
Yeah.
All right.
Is it as we do, or as do we?
Okay, go ahead.
As we do, or as do we?
I'm gonna skip the intro, but, the members of the planning board see that you believe in this city and its potential as we do. We recognize that collaboration between ourselves, developers, city staff, and the city council is the way to move the city of Lewiston forward to a more prosperous future. Was there something you wanted to fix?
Uh, I think it's as do we, uh, as we do.
Ah, yes. And can we?
Can we just say Lewiston rather than city of Lewiston, because we've said city council? Oh, no, sorry.
No.
Down below, sorry, Christine, third line, yeah.
Remove it though.
It is imperative that we work in tandem and trust to proactively plan for and invite development that fully realizes Lewiston's potential. We desire to work with you to develop, enact, and clarify a process, and build an understanding that actively supports this goal.
And there is the term desire in there, so that's great, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We recognize that there has been tension around emergent development proposals, most recently, the former Martell School at eight sixty Lisbon Street. This tension often stems from the process not being transparent enough in including the planning board as a collaborative partner. We have seen tension boil over from every party, citizens, board members, developers, and counselors, to nobody's benefit and to the detriment of the city as a whole. We want to acknowledge the mistrust in people and process this has created in our community, and we want to use the tools we have to restore that trust.
I think we use want too many times, we need to change that, um, and I don't think there should be a.
Comma.
Comma after enough.
That's what I thought when I was reading it.
Okay.
And then, uh, we want to acknowledge the mistrust, and we want, you could either just get rid of the second want and just have it, we want to acknowledge, you know, we want to, and then to acknowledge is one part, and then to use is the second part.
So, another place that you would, we could use acknowledge would be, we acknowledge tension around emergent development, uh, proposals? We're gonna remove that, that there has been, just like.
Yeah.
Tension. So back to want.
Then we could just say acknowledge.
We want to include the mistrust in people and process this has created in our community, We want to include the mistrust in people and process this has created our community and to use the tools we have to restore in this trust.
Yeah, so I guess we want. Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yeah.
The planning board is here to assist both staff and leadership in managing the actions relevant to Lewiston's current and future needs as they relate to land use, planning, and code. We strive to do this while holding community and economic development goals as the guiding vision within the framework of the comprehensive plan and our shared planning sessions.
Do we need the shared planning sessions?
We should leave that in because I think it's been very.
Okay.
It has been a, a progressive thing that we've.
That's fine, that's fine, just, yep.
We as a body have not denied nor added further restrictions to any proposed development project brought before the current board. In many cases, we have removed restrictions on proposed development projects while keeping within the spirit of the comprehensive plan, the design district overlay, the needs of neighborhoods, the projects that are proposed for, and the people each development, development proposal is intended to serve. We endeavor to be a trusted partner to all stakeholders in this mission.
Endeavor.
No, we can leave it, it's fine.
I put in a before, you know, brought before the current board because I didn't have the historic knowledge.
Right.
That is a very limited piece of time because that's like.
Yeah, I think, just to any proposed development.
Project.
Development project, yeah, you can just write and put the period there. Yep.
Do you want to have a time period on that?
In recent memory.
Be, just because, you know, it's one of, it's like you're stating this as fact.
It's ours, it's, so, yeah, in projects in recent memory.
We've never, ever.
Well, I think it's we, like we.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I was on, I was.
Because we're the signers of the letter.
Right.
Gotcha.
So, so I think that that qualifies it, okay.
I'm fine with in recent memory or I'm fine with it like that.
Yeah, me too, that's fine. Okay. Okay, uh, you, you see where the paragraph sign is?
Yeah.
Yeah, just return. And then go on the other side and bring up the we.
Here?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know why that's doing.
It puts the paragraph mark at the end of the paragraph, that's just how it's going to be.
Okay, it doesn't matter, as long as.
No one's going to see that.
Yeah, we need to re, to remove, there's an extra line, yeah, there we go. Okay, so.
Next one?
We want to reflect.
Yeah, we want to reflect on the choices that led to the current situation and identify areas that could benefit from an improved process. As the city council and planning board reach different recommendations regarding acquisition, disposition, and rezoning of properties, we think it reflects the impact of having incomplete information. Having a shared understanding of relevant data supports good decision-making. We desire to work with all stakeholders to reach a conclusion that best serves Lewiston.
I think we want to say shows, not reflects.
So we want to identify the mechanisms that led to the current situation?
Yep.
We want to identify where, where.
The top, instead of reflect.
Instead of reflect on the choices, identify the mechanisms?
Identify the mechanisms.
Yeah, right, that led.
Because a choice is like something you actively make and a mechanism is something that just.
That was there, right.
And it goes back to the systems.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we see greater cooperation between all parties as the best, best path forward. Joint sessions between our two bodies, including recent sessions regarding the Riverfront Island Master Plan and identifying pro, pro-business planning priorities, have proven fruitful. Lewiston is changing and in the coming years of our work as the planning board and city council, we will, will lay the groundwork for important efforts, including the planned development of Island Point, continued work on the projects outlined in the RIMP, and encouraged, encouragement of commercial development on key city corridors. We need to support solid processes and robust communication to drive these vital initiatives.
So if we go back up to pro-business, um, I'm thinking that we change that to identifying, um.
Pro-development?
Like sustainable development, uh, planning priorities or, or, or supportive development?
Specifically talking about rezoning commercial corridors to make development.
We also have been identified as not being pro-business in some of the recent discourse.
Okay, so we'll keep business in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's smart.
Lewiston is changing, period.
Something about that whole sentence didn't flow for me when I was reading it.
Lewiston is changing, period.
In the coming years.
In the coming years, comma, uh, yeah.
Our work.
Our work, remove that comma there, okay. As the planning board and city.
I don't think you needed that other comma.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why it didn't flow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that.
Well, no, so let's see.
In the coming years, our work is, in the coming years, our work as the planning board and city council will lay the groundwork for important efforts, including the planned development, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I think that sounds better.
I would also indicate staff in that.
Oh, okay, planning board, city, uh, planning board, staff, and city council.
Just because I know that there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, staff is a big, a big part, absolutely. We couldn't do what we do without them. Okay, so the point is high level guiding principles.
We propose the following points as high level guiding principles. All parties commit to professionalism and respect in our spoken and written words to reflect the importance of the work we do. We suggest this because we recognize that members of the planning board and the city council have spoken harshly out of frustration. We believe that we can only maintain the trust of Lewiston with level-headed discourse. All parties prioritize the free and open sharing of information. When a party has to request additional information, it delays the process. When a party makes a decision based on incomplete information, it might result in poor or incongruous outcomes.
So, uh, I know that it's already kind of worded, wordy, but reflect the importance of the work we do, uh, and the respect we hold for the institutions?
Let's see, I, I thought we could get rid of like the work we do.
Okay.
Or, or, uh, reflect the importance of our work.
We could say our shared work to drive home.
Yeah, our shared work, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And institution.
Huh?
If you want.
What's the institution?
No, what's the institution? That doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
No, we don't need that.
Okay.
Do we, are you trying to get at, Josh, like our shared work on behalf of Lewiston?
Yeah.
So do we just say that, our shared work on behalf of Lewiston?
Yeah.
There we go.
Because none of this is for us, right?
Right, no, I mean, yeah, in its residence, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Yes, it's because we recognize.
You want? Okay. We recognize that the preceding points are aspirational as well as subjective, so we also propose the following actions as tangible next steps. We encourage approaching future impactful development opportunities in partnership and welcome the sharing of pertinent information whether through an invitation to joint workshops and/or executive sessions regarding acquisitions, dispositions, and rezoning decisions. We do this in the spirit of efficiency, good communication, and creating a shared understanding that lends to consistent and positive decisions regarding Lewiston's development and future. We look forward to partnering with the city council to craft a joint statement regarding our shared vision for development in the city. We seek to be part of sharing a message broadly that invites development, enhances quality of life, and attracts investment.
There needs to be a comma between information and whether, um.
The first or second one?
Uh, first one, second line.
Spirit of.
Uh, no.
Information, the second, at the end of the line.
Oh.
Yeah, information, comma, weather.
Okay.
Whether through an invitation to join.
Yeah, agreed.
Comma after sessions.
Sessions. We encourage approaching future impactful development opportunities in partnership and welcome the sharing of pertinent information, whether through an invitation to joint workshops and/or executive sessions regarding acquisitions, dispositions, and regarding decisions. Could we change, get rid of this one? I feel like it's so many commas.
Yeah, too many commas and ands.
Yeah.
I feel like that works.
Yeah.
The second bullet point, uh, our, could we say our joint vision for development because we then say sharing a message below?
Well, we said to craft a joint statement.
Oh, whoopsies.
So can we pull out, we do this in the spirit of efficiency, good communication, creating a shared understanding that lends, and put that as a closer to these two points?
Hmm.
Like, like a second, like.
A third point?
Yeah, before concluding paragraph.
Yeah.
So make it a separate paragraph, but not a, but not a bullet point?
Right.
Okay.
Whoops, doing that again.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's.
Better.
We have no doubt.
Now, these are both also the same size, not that that matters, but.
No, but it looks good.
All right, so I'm going to start here. We do this in the spirit of efficiency, good communication, and create, creating a shared understanding that lends to consistent and positive decisions regarding Lewiston's development and future. In conclusion, we have no doubt that we'll be able to overcome these communication issues and fulfill our complementary civic responsibilities, ushering in Lewiston's future success. Thank you for your consideration and we look forward to working with the city council, developers, citizens, and staff for the benefit of our treasured city.
Looks good to me.
Going to cry.
Can we, just what, and the second bullet point, again, under shared, so shared vision, can we say collective vision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to. Good old synonym search.
Good old.
Okay.
You know, we can't, we're probably going to get ChatGPT to do this.
We're joking about that while we were writing this, it's like.
I'm sure.
If we just threw this into a chatbot, like, would it be, would it be the same?
Say this is all collectively our words.
Yes.
I think it's great.
Well, my thought was that we all put writing samples into the chatbot collectively.
And it worked too.
So it's, it's framed in a, in a, in a, in a positive light, in my opinion. It's, it's one of those things that we're, we're asking for a consideration for, for, um, for, um, joint, uh, efforts to, to get the work done. We're here to help.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so can we save it as not the draft?
Final.
Final.
We can save it as a PDF.
Well, uh, okay.
Are we all going to sign it or what is?
Is it going to go over email?
My vote would be that we do this over email because we are missing two members, um.
For them to see one final draft or see the final.
Sign it.
Well, like, we don't, we don't sign it, we just send it.
Yeah, it doesn't get signed. All right, I want to put it in here. And I want to put it in. How are we going to call it? Final instead of draft. Alrighty, I just want to make sure that it's there.
Do we have to make a motion to accept this?
Yeah, yeah, we will. I just want to make sure that.
Put it in the.
Yeah, I've got it on the, um, on the flash drive.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's what I was double checking here to make sure that, that it was being saved to.
Storage.
The store and go, and it's called final, and we'll save it again. All right, so it's there. All right, so now I.
Is it there in two different places?
Well, it's.
Always good to have some sort of a backup.
Backup. It's, it's.
In case one disappears.
All right, so there's a new folder here, so I'm just going to, all right. Why can't I rename this stupid thing?
That's what I do, I email stuff to myself to have.
Is there an email client on this computer, Shelly?
I don't know, let's, um, let's find out.
Oh, this is a.
We request staff assistance on.
Technology. Yeah, because I don't know what you, okay, let me just get rid of this and I'll let you.
Is the, how, how, um, are you looking to get it into my email or into one of your personal emails?
You can send it to me and I can send it out.
Okay.
It probably should go out from one of us, not from staff.
Yeah, so, um, you could log into, you know, your, your account.
Yeah, okay.
Um. Oh, yeah. Stop sharing or whatever.
Yeah, pull the.
Pull the HDMI.
Yeah, yeah, pull the black cord out.
All right.
Nothing like unplugging.
All the power going out overnight. Having left all your worksheets open.
Can I make the motion to accept it?
Yes, please.
I don't really actually know how to phrase it, but I will make a motion to accept the final draft of the letter to the city council as written in this meeting. And to send it to the city council.
Okay.
Do you think I need to add?
Can I, can I make a, can I make a friendly amendment to that?
Yeah.
Uh, pending, uh, the feedback of, uh, the two planning board members currently not present.
To do that, I believe we would have to, uh, send that out as an attachment for next meeting and then vote on it in.
Yeah.
Okay, so I second Christine's, yeah, so I, I.
Second the original motion.
I, I second the original motion. Do you want us to vote on that motion?
Uh.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Uh, have a reading of the exact wording of the motion.
Yeah.
Right.
So I have a motion here by Christine Kittredge to accept the final draft of the letter written, um, as written, and to send it to the city council.
Pending.
We weren't going to do that part because we would have to, like, we'd have to meet again to.
Oh, okay, I thought the idea was to, okay.
No, it's to get it so that when I get it tomorrow, I'm going to sign the planning board and I can put all our names.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I'll put the planning board, uh, city of Lewiston, and I'll, I'll write all our names down. And then I will send it, okay, so who am I sending it to? So that's, that's.
Yeah, I just said the city council, but I'm happy to amend my own motion if.
Right, so are we, we're sending it to, um, Administrator Hunter, the mayor, because it's addressed to mayor. Mayor Hunt, um, Heather Hunter, the administrator, city council, staff, but which staff?
Planning staff?
Planning staff?
Planning board.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you, if you want to send it to myself or Director Hediger, uh, that's fine, we can share it with other, other planning staff as well.
It is only addressed to the mayor and the council.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's not even to the entire council, it's addressed to the president of the city council.
And the honorable.
And honorable members of the council.
Yeah, so.
Well, what I can do is the mayor, the, um, city, uh, okay, so not, so she's a CC. City council is to, so this is to, so mayor and city council is where it, uh, it goes to.
Right.
And CC'd to Administrator Hunter, staff, and, and us.
Planning board, correct. So we all have receipt.
Would you include the deputy administrator or just, just the administrator?
Why, why do we need to have the administrator on there? Not that I'm necessarily opposed, but I'm just curious.
Just so she knows what's happening?
Staff, staff answers to the administration and administration coordinates for the council, so.
So I can do, I can do O'Malley as well if, if you guys want to, it's up to you guys.
Can't you just share it with them anyway?
Yeah, I think just the administrator.
Just the admin, okay, so to mayor and city council, CC, the administrator, planning staff, and planning board.
Sounds good to me.
So I need to amend my motion to say that?
Uh, I don't know if you need to, um, yeah, I think that that can be just part of the discussion about the letter and, um, if you want to, you can.
I don't really care either way, so I'm gonna.
So right now we have a motion to accept the final draft of the letter as written and to send it to the city council.
The mayor, the mayor and the city council.
Amend it to say the mayor and the city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
With the administrator.
I was just double checking that I got it before closing it off.
Aren't they CCs, so we're really sending it to the mayor and the city council?
Right, we're sending it to the mayor and city council.
And the CCs are administrator.
Administrator Hunter.
Courtesy.
Right.
It's a courtesy, you know.
And in this, huh, still want to discuss it for a second here.
Yeah.
And it'll become a public document as the result of.
Right. Because it's a, because it's a, an email, it's.
You want me to add that to the motion or is that a question?
No, no, I'm not looking not to add anything to the motion, I'm just not ask.
Anybody can access it through.
Anybody can access it, none, because my, my biggest fear is, um, it's delivered, a lot like recommendations on anything, put into the city council's packet, and some members read it, some members don't. And in the end, regardless of whether it was read or not, it could be pretty much ignored. And that's my, my concern here is if it gets totally ignored. I, I know last week, uh, I was thinking this should go to the press, no, but I don't really think that, uh, CC needs to go to the press.
Well, it can be a, it can be a BCC to the press, but I mean, or I can send it as a separate item.
No, no, I, I don't think BCC is something we should ever use.
No, I.
And, uh, uh, I, I'm just saying that the press would have act, when I asked the first question about, uh, public document, if the press is interested, then they can get their hands on a copy.
Yeah, as soon as this, I mean, the fact that this letter now exists and it's gone, let's say to Lucy's email, means that somebody could do a FOA request, right, that, you know, its existence.
Alex?
Yeah, to the, to the question of press, I strongly feel, uh, that, at least my intention for this letter is that it is a, you know, outreach to work collaboratively, and I don't want it to be seen in any way as dragging people across the carpet or, you know, making it be, you know, an exposition or taking someone to task. I, this is between us and the city council and.
And if they make it public, that's fine, and if, if it doesn't get public.
If it gets public, that's fine, but that's not the intention.
If it gets public, that's fine, but that's not the intention that I at least hold with this, I, I really.
Right, right, no, I, I had no intention of really sending it.
This is about process improvement between us and the City Council. It's pretty boring for most people.
But, but my, my concern is, if something gets ignored, the same public that we represent, as the council represents, can be totally left in the dark and blind, just like we saw when the public showed up here and spoke to the issue.
Staff, is there a, is there a way to request that a reading of the letter gets put on their agenda for City Council?
Um, you know, I don't know, but we, you could certainly, you could certainly make that request, and staff will look into that.
Well, the other, the other alternative is that, um, I show up at the public meeting, and there is a fifteen minute public, uh, public, uh, discussion, that you can bring up anything you want.
Yeah.
And I can read it in, at that point. That's up to you.
I, I would just put forward that, um, I would like to see a, 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 a public statement released between the council and the Planning Board, that's what I'm hoping will be the public statement. Um, and so that, that said, I think perhaps we, we do give this, um, an opportunity to.
To just simmer, to see, to see what they do.
To see, to see what type of response we, we get, I, I think that generally, um, we, we were, um, we weren't, we weren't hand slapping.
Right, right, and this will go individually to each person's, each city council's, city email.
Yep, and so, and so I, I'm, I'm just, I, I think that.
Think we don't wanna push, slap him in the face with it, we just wanna.
Yeah, I think, I think it will be received with, with, hopefully, um.
Openness.
Exactly, but, but certainly, certainly not received in a manner that's a, that, that, that it, that feels aggressive, because there's nothing aggressive about it.
No, there's not, Christine?
Well, and I think too, I mean, there, there is public record of us doing this process, the letter's now been read multiple times, um, and if in the future, we feel like it was never acknowledged, we can refer back to this, and there is, you know, public evidence, it'll be in our minutes from this meeting.
Right, and it's gonna be on YouTube, this, 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 uh.
So I don't think that there's no record of this ever existing, and if we feel like we need to invoke it in the future.
Then we can.
We've had this entire meeting around it, so.
Okay. Michael?
And we heard before, remember Shenokox, uh, left for the evening, when she was confident in the final product. Just wanna make sure that Amy Smith is also confident in the final product, so she should get probably a first read before it gets widely distributed.
I don't think that that's, that's.
I don't think that's necessary.
I don't think it's, it's, and I don't.
They've already agreed to.
They've already agreed to.
To sign off on it?
To sign off on it, so I, I don't think.
Well, I, I, I know if I was in Amy's position, and I missed this entire process tonight, I'd wanna see the final product before I put my name to something.
Well, actually, her name won't be on it.
Is there?
She's a full member.
Well, she's a full member, but she, you know, she is not going to be on the vote.
She won't be on the vote, no.
She won't be on the vote, cause it's going to be Lee and, and Alex.
Did, I'm, I'm forgetting, um, from when Amy sent the email, did she provide any indication that she would not be comfortable with us moving forward with this, if she didn't get a chance to look at it?
Probably absent of any sentiment.
Um, let's see, she didn't.
Not in this email.
She didn't say anything in this email, cause I've got it here, um, she just gives the pro, and she gets, she says regards, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
So.
She just said, I'm, she's, she cannot attend, she has minimal feedback, which she sent to us.
Yeah, she's, she, you know, what she wrote was to Shelley, thanks for passing this along to the Planning Board, please shoot me an email, so I know you received it in time, thanks so much, Amy.
Well, so with the whole, like, meeting, more than two, three, like, three, three or more of us, can this be considered a meeting? If Lucy was to just send a copy of it to Amy and said, just for your awareness, this is the final copy, would that be okay? I mean, it's public record anyways, so.
I mean, it can certainly be sent to her, I guess your discussion is whether you want to wait for her to weigh in on whether she's okay with it before it's sent.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we should wait, I should just, I can send it to her as a, a, a separate, and say, okay, uh, this is going out first thing tomorrow morning, or, you know, whatever. When, when do you want me, do you want me to send it out tonight? I can go home and, and send it out tonight, I mean, I don't, it's early enough.
May make one suggestion, so, well, one, to your comment earlier, Lucy, by her not being able to attend, it's like any other instance where a voting member's not able to attend.
Right.
And that they then give the right for the other person to step in and vote, so I think that's one with Amy's absence, and then two, could you just send the final copy to all of us, so we have it on record?
Well, you're, you're all gonna be.
I know that, but I'm just saying in advance of sending it to the City Council.
Yeah, I can send it as a, as, as two emails, I can send an email that just.
Says here's our final.
Here's, here's the final draft, and then, um.
I will be sharing momentarily.
I'll be sharing momentarily, so, tonight or tomorrow morning?
I think, I think any time is fine with me, I'm just thinking, since we're gonna be copied on, on that email.
I think sending it twice is, is.
Yeah, why send it the first time?
Then we don't have to, I, I was just.
My, my fear is that somebody would then respond to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if we just ride with, she's not present, somebody's voting in her absence.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's the, yes, Michael?
Not that I'm, I'm belaboring the point, but, uh.
But you are. I'm kidding.
I'm sure that's how I'm coming, coming across.
I'm, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
But, uh, I, I'm just saying that, uh, like, yeah, most business, if you, uh, those who short make the decisions, as the phrase would go.
Yeah.
Um, and that would be that, this was not an item that we were probably looking for a split vote on. We're looking for unanimity, uh, and a sentiment from the full board altogether, that's why I raised the concern. Definitely don't want to, uh, have a situation where the person or persons not in attendance would wanna make, uh, substantial changes afterwards.
Right.
Uh, I was just concerned that, uh, if it was me, I'd like to ha- uh, like to have had a read before it got distributed, that's what I was sharing.
Yeah, Alex?
To the, the, to that point, um, I think, uh, based on the edits we did today, we did not make substantive changes except for the one paragraph.
Dropping those bullets.
Well, for, well, so we got rid of the, the bullets, we got rid of the center section, that's one substantive change, so I guess there was two. And then talking about the root issue in the beginning, I think that was another.
But that was her, and that was her comment.
But that was one that was brought by Amy, so I think.
Right, so we, we changed to what she thought was best in that respect, so I, I think we're.
I guess that's why I wonder, to Michael's point of just being aware of what's going to go out, why not have Lucy just send it to Amy as like an FYI, not inviting feedback, um, and then it goes to everybody in the morning, you know? So she's given like twelve hours of.
Okay, so, so to Amy, tonight?
But she can't do anything with it.
Right.
Right, does, this is it.
But it's just the idea of she's getting a heads up before.
Courtesy, yeah.
And I will send this out first thing tomorrow morning, okay? All right, Roger Dupree.
Yes.
For Joshua Najin.
Yes.
Michael Marcot.
Yes.
Christine Kittredge.
Yes.
The, uh.
Albert.
Albert, yes. And Alex.
Yes.
And Lucy Bisson, yes. All right, so there are no minutes, call, uh, vote, uh, motion to adjourn?
Second, uh, or motion to adjourn, I, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Roger, did you second that?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, Shelley.
Yes, thank you, Shelley.
Thank you so very much, Shelley.
Thank you, Alex and Shannon.
Yes, thanks, yeah, Alex and Shelley, you did the, you did the law, the law, or, did you guys physically get together, or did you do?
We did at the end, it was, uh, it was a wild week, I shouldn't have signed up for it, but glad that I did.
Thank you.
Thank you very.
Well, that's good.
That was.
Still in there.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it's my.
We're, we're still on, we're still on, shh, we're still on air.
Yes, 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 no, I think, I think the biggest struggle there is, writing such an important document took time.
Yeah.
There's a lot of time invested in that, uh, and late at night, when I had free time, so.
Right.
I'm glad we edited it as a group. Very appreciative of that.
Yeah, I think the editing went well, and we have.